All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order for Monday, September 12. If Ms. Joy will do the prayer and Ms. Drew will give the pledge.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this city. We thank you for all the citizens. And we pray, Lord, that you take us and use each of us as an instrument to be your peace and to be your wheel for the good of all. We thank you, Lord, for the safe weather that we've had thus far. And we ask you, Lord, to please carry us through this hurricane season and bless us with sunshine and blue skies. For it is truly in your name that we pray.
Amen.
Our pledge, please, is to defy on the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Ellender?
Here.
Mr. Nasa?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Ms. Ashar?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here. Real quick, if we have these little forms to fill out, if you want to speak on an item on the agenda or if they hinder public comment, we'll put one of these out. Ms. Arlie? All right, and I need a motion in a second to approve the meeting minutes from the previous meeting.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Yeah.
Any opposed, say nay. Need a motion in a second to remove item 12A.
Second.
We're gonna, I don't, we're gonna print the agenda first. I need a motion in a second to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
I know.
I'd like to make a motion to remove item 12A. I decided to remove it because understanding that the bond will not be released until it is fully cleaned up. That's a second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Ashar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes. I need a motion in a second to add item 11A.
Hey, that's a red summit. It's a resolution. Do I read it? Resolution approving liquor license for Cameron Kalichin Mexican Grill LLC located at 504 North Douglas Parkway. Second.
Would anybody like to speak on this item? Since it's an addition?
Where's that? 11A?
11A?
Red.
Okay, 11A. Yeah, we're adding this one. The reason that we're adding it is because it was, the agenda was already published whenever we decided to add it.
I'd like to speak on that.
Okay.
So if we're adding a liquor license to something, so to me, that's not administrative. You're not supposed to add anything at the beginning unless it's administrative. Did I read your doc, the governing documents incorrectly? The way that I read it was either in Robert's rules of order or the charter, said anything could be added at the beginning of a meeting with unanimous decision, but that it has to be administrative only. And this doesn't seem administrative to add a liquor license. And this doesn't give the public a chance to, those affected by this, doesn't give them, which we neighbors, doesn't give them a chance to know that, to be here. Am I right or am I wrong?
The requirement is just that adding something to the agenda be done unanimously by the council is not limited to any class of matters, but it does require a unanimous vote of the council to add something on the day of to the agenda.
But in the wording, it also says that if there is something to be added that's not administrative, that a special meeting has to be called if it needs to be done ahead of time before the next meeting. That's why I'm in.
There's not a requirement that it has to be unanimous, but.
Okay.
You have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Ashar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
The next item, I need a motion in a second to add an item 11B.
So move.
This was an introduction of ordinance amending the general fund budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. This item is being added since the agenda had already been published at the time the information was received. Would anyone wish to speak on this item? Arlie, roll call, please.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Ashar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Arlie, that should have been red, year ending June 30th, 2022. And then I don't want it to be red, June 30th, 2023.
Oh, well, then let's amend it.
Make a motion to amend it?
Second.
I got one second. Okay. Roll call. Can we re, pre-roll call?
You want us to reread it? Just to make sure that.
You can.
Okay. Introduction of ordinance amending the general fund budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. I'm on 11, I'm on 11D.
Right.
No, that's, that's.
It's been amended.
Change that to 22 is what the, is what the amendment is.
It's wrong.
It was a typo on the paper.
Yeah, okay, I got you. June 30th, 2022. We have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Ms. Ashar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Okay, so the next item is a mo, I need a motion in a second to add item 11C.
So moved.
Second.
Second, we need to amend that to 2023.
You do.
So motion to amend.
Motion to amend the addition.
Second.
Think if y'all want, y'all can have a roll call on the amendment.
Roll call on the amendment, Arlie, please.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Oh, Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Ashar?
Yes.
Ma'am, Chair, now you asked for public comment on whether to add that item in the agenda.
Does anyone wish to speak on that item? And again, this item is being added since the agenda was already out by the time the information had been received. Are we done with that? Anything we missed on that one?
You have to vote on add.
Add 11D.
No, no, you need to still vote on 11C. You only voted on the amendment.
Right. I need a new roll call.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Ashar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes. I need a motion in a second to add item 11D. It's an introduction of ordinance authorizing Mayor Danahay to sign agreement with Sulphur Housing Authority
So moved.
for the Santeri Sewer Lift Station replacement project. And again, this item is being added because the information was received after the agenda was already put out. Have a motion in a second. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Ashar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
And now I need a motion in a second to approve the agenda as amended?
Sorry, second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Ashar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
All right, item number one is a public hearing on ordinance declaring certain surplus movable property in the city of Sulphur and providing for the disposal thereof. Does anyone wish to speak on this item?
Need amended. Motion to amend. Since the last two items on the list were added after the introduction of office.
Ma'am Chair, um, do you have any questions or something to add as a? We did that.
So Melinda made a motion.
To amend.
To amend it? And she read it out loud. Do I have a second?
So move.
To amend. Roll call, please. Does anyone wish to speak on that item, on the amendment? Roll call, please.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Ashar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes. Now I need a motion in, in a second to approve as amended?
So move.
Second.
Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Ashar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes. Item number two, introduction of ordinance amending Chapter 18, Section 4 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sulphur under subdivisions, ordinance 88-22, Mayor Danahay.
Thank you, Ma'am Chair. I'm going to defer to Mr. Austin Abraham, Public Works Director.
This amendment is just to make the definitions of subdivision ordinance more clear and concise, removing the size of the land and just make it to five or less lots for minor subdivision and five or more lots for major subdivision requiring infrastructure.
So move, second.
Does anyone wish to speak on this item? I think I had, um, Mr. Bill Ablong?
Bill Ablong, second half of your job. Uh, thank you very much for what you just did. And that's why I wanted to get up at the front right here. I didn't know which one to get on. But when you guys pass things, you know, like Ms. Hardy added a couple of items there, we don't know what you're doing out there. You're not recording the meetings anymore, you know, according to what I heard last, I mean, people all went on that too, because I see some cameras in here. But if you would explain a little bit more, I don't expect y'all to spend the whole night up here explaining it to the people in here. But, you know, if you know what you're talking about, and I know you studied it, you voted your conscience on it and everything else, but it would make it a little more, uh, I hate to use this word, transparent, if you tell us what you're talking about, you know? Nobody knows what you just voted on. If we had, if had to pass a test here, pass a test run, nobody passed, because the first item you voted on, nobody knows what you're talking about other than you guys, you know? And these people come to the meeting and they spend their time up here because they're concerned citizens. So anything that you can do to, just give a little more information when you bring these things up, because I know, as dumb as I am, I don't know what half of this stuff is unless you explain it to me. And, you know, you got handicap signs outside, I'm parked in one of them, so help us out. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on that item? Need a motion in a second?
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Ashar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Item number three is an introduction of ordinance repealing ordinance 1787 from the major subdivision ordinance 89-22, Mayor Danahay.
So move.
So this is just removing the, uh, the standalone ordinance for a major subdivision since we addressed it in the previous, um, item.
So the old way, major and minor subdivision was an acre. This is based on five lots, you know, that would be the demarcation line incident.
Arlie, you had your motion in second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Ashar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Item number five is introduction of ordinance granting a variance to Patty DeVille at 334 Evelyn Street to allow her chi-
It's number four.
Did I say number five?
Yes.
I meant number four. Item number four, introduction of ordinance granting a variance to Patty DeVille, 334 Evelyn Street, to allow her chicken pen closures to be less than the required 50 feet from a residential property line. Ordinance 90-22, Ms. Drew Ellender.
Second.
Appreciate y'all allowing me the time to come back. Ms. Melinda, you asked me to come back with a plan, and I have. Ms. Joy, you had requested, you, you'd mentioned my rooster multiple times. He is actually dead now. I, I gave him away to somebody. I have removed three of my chickens now, including him. He got killed. All three of my ducks are gone, so that's six animals down. The animal, the rabbit cage has been moved completely out of that line altogether. My bruises and my cuts and scrapes are from, um, moving the chick, the pig pen this weekend. She is now about 35 feet from, um, the east side, which is towards Henry, and 35 feet from the south side, which is going towards Verdine. We haven't moved the pig pen, the chicken pen yet, because maybe the pig pen took four hours and we were exhausted. Um, and the rain prevented us previously from being able to do anything. But with the way we have it, we will still have 54 feet remaining to the north side of the, to the nor, to the north property. That will take 10 feet for my chicken's pen, which still leaves me leeway to at least have 35 feet to the adjacent property.
I'm a little confused with what you just said.
It'll be 35, 35, 35.
So, um, we voted this down twice and Ms. DeVille found something in the ordinance that was not, I guess, clearly white and white. And she brought it back up, uh, because it was gray matter. So that's why she's back here.
I'm sorry about your rooster.
It's good. I tried giving it, I, and I also, um, to help you even more, I even convinced my neighbor who had a rooster to get rid of their rooster. So if you hear a rooster in that neighborhood anymore, I have no clue where it's coming from.
But I'm gonna handle it. I love animals, and I know how hard it is when you have one. It's easy to make home for another. And pretty soon you have another, and you have another. I understand that. I really do. But we're in the city. And I don't know what you're counting as, I think the last time is 23, and you're right, you've been able to take care of several of them, and I got it. And, you know, there are times you make decisions that, you know, you feel like it's the right thing. Maybe your heart feels something different. But you have to make the right decisions for the city as a whole. And, you know, I, I just feel strongly about this matter, and I'm sorry for you on that. And again, I really, I don't want you, you know, I don't want any of your animals to die or, or anything like that, but it's just not the place for them. And you live in that area where they're big yores. I know the area. My mother lived two doors down. I just sold the property. I know the area very, very well. So I'm speaking about something I know. But it's just hard to support that many animals in city, in city, we're in the city. And I understand. It's not like it used to be.
I, I have no intentions on getting any more, the pig alone, she's a handful. Um, I have no intentions on getting any more animals. It was hard to get rid of the ones that I got rid of, but it was in a way a relief, because it was a lot to maintain. And like we discussed, emotionally, this is very hard on me either way. And there was, like we said, some, there was a variance that concerned me is, um, that it could be, a variance can be approved if it's causing a hardship. Since our meeting, my medication has had to be changed four times because of emotional distress that I'm dealing with, with trying to understand. No one, it, this is my third meeting, like you said, not one person has come and stood before y'all and told y'all that my animals were affecting them or bothering them.
Somebody had to go, someone.
The original reason was, like I've stated before, my pig got loose when my daughter fell and I was tending to her. That has been adjusted to where she cannot do that anymore. And whoever the complaint was from, I was told they were complaining on behalf of someone else who had to get rid of their animals. But that person has not come to me. That person has not come to one of these meetings. I would happily be, they encompassed my animals. They could, you know, do anything. And I understand that there's an ordinance of distances, and that's not what it looks like anymore, because things have been moved around.
What are the sizes of your pens?
Um, currently, because we just redid my, um, pig's pen, it's a 13 by 13, and my chickens is a 10 by 10. My yard's 102.5.
Your pig is a 4 by 4.
Yeah, your pen, yeah, that's much larger pens than what they were.
The, the chickens have been in a 10 by 10.
But the pig wasn't in a 10 by 10.
No, ma'am, she was not. But when I spoke with Mr. Greg, he made a comment about the size of her pen. And so we made it.
I spoke to him to get his opinion as, you know, he had a lot of animals.
Right, because I was, at my last meeting, I was told to talk with Ms. Drew and also to talk with Mr. Greg. And Mr. Greg, that is one thing that he did mention, is the size of her pen. So I made it a little bit bigger. But in, when I turned in my variance, it was stating that I was gonna have the 4 by 4 pen that was the duck's pen in there, and that will no longer be in there. So that leaves more of the 102.5 feet of space.
And your pigs kind of more, I mean, she's a baby.
Yeah.
Do you have any more questions? I know, um, we also had Jared Hewitt found up. Did you have any more questions, Ms. DeVille, on that?
Your concerns were the number of animals, and I've worked with them. I'm showing my willingness to work with y'all to help me maintain my proper counseling and therapy. My counsel was specifically here, she has COVID, so she was unable to attend with me.
Do you need me to go to the monitor?
You had signed up. You feel of course, yeah, you don't mind.
Ladies, everybody's lucky today. My asthma, can't hardly breathe and talk, so I shouldn't be too long-winded. Everybody knows that I'm a huge therapy advocate, obviously. I have a therapy dog. I also have a medical service animal. I've said from the beginning, I've been behind Ms. Patty on this, and, um, I've helped her. I know y'all wanted her to come up with a plan. She's obviously doing everything she can, continuing to get rid of some animals, gotten rid of some as well. And I think, you know, the other consideration that we need to consider here too is that she does use them for ad purposes, for the kids and for school, for homeschooling the kids. So I think, I think that tonight, we need to really, four medics, medicine changes in, in, in a matter of two months is, is, is really severe. I mean, I mean, it really is. It's not a, nothing to play with. And, uh, I, I just hope we can get this resolved tonight and let her continue to do her plan and, um, have the animals that are agreed upon or whatever. But, uh, I mean, I think, I, I think she's done what she's been asked to do. And I've sat here in every meeting and watched her ask for help, saying, please tell me what I need to do with my animals. So again, I just ask the council to please consider, I know that there's a, pardon me. I know there is concern that it will open the door for other people to come in and say, oh, I have a therapy, whatever. Okay, it might. But if they have the proper paperwork, we all know how strong mental illness is today. It's in every shape and form. If they have the proper paperwork, well, then I, I think you, you do it on the stand. Case by case. And that's all. Thank you.
How many animals are you bringing down to? How many do you have now?
Outside, 14.
14. And when you, when you discuss a plan, how, what is your plan to, are you, do you have plans to get rid of any more? Are you in the process? Because I, I know it's not my district, but like I would be okay with, like, when you talk about a plan, how long will it take you to get rid of some of the other animals? So I don't want you to have to give them to a slaughterhouse or anything.
Oh, no, that will never happen. No, no, that's, that's not an option.
I want you to be able to find, like, rehome them.
I, um, I have a few of the chickens that are set to go to the place that took my other chickens, but I told them I cannot release them until they have a better system, because apparently from my understanding, my rooster was brutally killed. So I don't want that to happen again, because I mean, that, that was even hard on me, even to know he was no longer in my care and I was not responsible for it. And it was no way I could prevent it. That was hard on me. Because that was, I, I raised all, except my pig, I raised all these animals since they were one to two days old. Chickens get sold at about two days old. I've had them since they were babies. Gertrude, my pig was a rescue. Um, she was living in a horrible environment. And we didn't realize at that time that we took her in that this would be this kind of problem. We, we had her for about six to eight months before any of this even became an issue. So she's, I don't know how well you know about pigs, but they're like dogs. They bond with their family. You call her and she'll come running across the yard. Um, my plan is initially to put, eventually put her as well in a 10 by 10 cage, like my chickens are in. Um, that way it will even take up less space. Um, that, I just have to get the finances lined up for that. It won't take me long. Um, this current weekend, as long as y'all see it fit, we will be moving the chicken pen to the, because right now the chicken pen is in the same place. We weren't able to rotate it yet to the opposite, um, end of the yard. And it does also give us privacy. We kind of liked it. It gave us some privacy from Henry Street, because it's an interesting neighborhood sometimes.
What's to say you won't get more animals?
I give you my absolute word. You can come to my house, come check on me every single day. I, I don't have, they became overwhelming for me when it, this all started, because then I got concerned that I wasn't, because of my mental status, I started panicking. When Ms. Melinda questioned, well, Patty, why do you- When Ms. Melinda questioned, well Patty, why do you have so many? Then it, it came to concern to me, well, what if I'm not properly taking care of them? What if I'm not giving them the attention and the love that they need? I, I don't want to obtain anymore.
So what's your end goal with sports? How many animals or pets do you plan to maintain?
Um, I believe y'all had said eleven was the number of chickens that y'all had said. It's not in the ordinance, so I've never been able to find it. Um, if y'all would please grant me, I would prefer to keep all of them, because it is hard to separate chickens, because there is a pecking order, and when you move them to a different group, they get beat up on pretty severely and sometimes killed. Because once they...